Let's come to order, please. I call the council meeting of the Carthage City Council for Thursday, December 2nd, 2021 to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Sam, Councilwoman Knappel.
Present.
Councilman Babcock.
Here.
Councilman Evil.
Yep.
Councilman Peters.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reese. Uh, city attorney, moments.
Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from November? Yes, sir?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, approved, thank you. There's, there are no bills over ten thousand, so we'll move on to, do we have any citizens' concerns here? Yes, sir?
Citizens' concerns?
Yes. I got one.
Okay, come right up.
Why didn't we not get notified about closing the road for another?
I'm sorry, what?
We're closing the road and I was never notified about it.
Well, we're talking about that tonight.
Yeah, fine thing. We didn't know about it a week ago, where we could tell people how to get in there. They done this to me a few years ago when they put the sewer line.
Okay.
I was cut out for four weeks, couldn't even get in except with a car pickup truck. I couldn't ship nothing out or nothing.
Well, we're, we're going to give people a way to go around, but that's what we're gonna, uh, we'll talk about that.
We need to tell the people, I mean, would you wanna drive somewhere and don't know there's a detour or nothing coming up?
We just kinda found out about this, we had a meeting a little, couple of days ago, and that's when they decided.
Sam, what happened?
Well, if they're gonna close the road, then I may not be able to get in.
Third Avenue, we're not doing that at all.
Detour people, it ain't gonna bother me myself, but my customers come in and don't know how to get there. We ain't gonna let her off, but then they went to put the sewer line in there. Four weeks, we had to go through the trailer park. Couldn't take a pickup truck trailer through. Cause they had an ditch out there from the sewer plant coming down to the bridge down there.
We're, we're going to repair the bank erosion there.
That's fine.
They ha- they haven't done it yet, though, but they're planning on doing it.
But if they didn't notify, notify a week ago, the more I could hold you, you know, you couldn't get to your place if you could've held your customers' mind. We can't get in the front door, we gotta go in the back door.
I understand, yep.
Is our reading stopped?
It's Monday at seven o'clock.
Monday seven.
It'll be for three weeks, too.
Is there a way to push it up a little bit, um, so that they could still come in the back way?
Come in the back way, but if we're holding people.
Signs up to let them know.
Yeah, put some signs up, let people know, put in the paper or something.
Well, we're going to, that, there, it will. This is decided a couple of days ago because of their schedule, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, but, uh.
McColl's big enough thing got notified before I did, that's how I found out about it.
Well, I thought Les, didn't Les tell you about this?
I didn't see Les till after I done, McColl's told me.
Okay.
We need to get people.
I asked him about it.
Um, we'll do everything we can, we may try to, if, if we can route, if Domino's will let us, we may try to route some folks through that parking lot area.
Well, we can put a sign up down there for the end of First Avenue where people know we go through that to get to Third Avenue.
Well, we can do that, we can do that, too, if you, that's another way to get down there.
Yeah, I already graded the road through there by the sewer plant.
Okay, then we'll put a sign there. I just didn't know if that was, the road was okay to go through there at this point.
We graded it down, y'all, do no grading on there or nothing, so.
Okay, well, we'll put a sign there, too.
Pass through, I mean.
Okay, well, we're gonna have a sign at Jefferson, we're gonna have a sign at the other end at Industrial, so we'll put one at First Avenue, too, I think that won't be a, Chief, well, he's not here, but that shouldn't be a problem.
Sam, you gonna be happy with detour signs that help you out?
That'll be fine, I mean.
Okay.
You know, somebody, I have people that don't live here.
Yeah.
They don't know that they come around by the sewer plant and come through.
Right, I understand, well, we'll.
I mean, the truck that picks up my stuff comes down Third Avenue.
Yeah.
Which I done called them and told them they couldn't come through after Monday.
Okay, well, we'll definitely put a sign there, that's no problem, put one at First and at Third, and then there'll be one detouring, uh, we'll put one on the other side at Industrial. And some of them will go down Jefferson to come down that other way. Okay, we wanna accommodate you in every way, it's just, this is kind of, it came up and their schedule was such, they could only do it now, and it's getting pretty, pretty gnarly out there if we don't take care of that embankment.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sam, appreciate it. Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to move this red, the new resolution and all new business to the next item on the agenda due to the fact that we have one council member that may have to leave early.
Okay.
So all new business and this resolution to the front, the next order of business.
Wait, wait a minute, okay, tell me again which new business, all new business?
All new business and this resolution that we just went over in the special call meeting.
Okay. We will that, um. Okay, we were going to, Scott, would that mess you up any if we, if we don't do your? Okay, they are P, okay. Alright, so this moves that all up, so the next order would be the resolution that we just voted to fill in the blanks?
Need to vote on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, all, any discussion? All in favor?
I want a discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, for the record, what are we paying lifeguards?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
That's not, that's not about.
We're not on this one?
We haven't, that didn't come up, the, we're just making so we move it to talk about it, the next, that's be the next item we talk about.
We're just voting to.
We're just voting to move it up.
Okay, got you, alright, I apologize.
Okay, all in favor of moving the agenda around?
Aye.
Okay, so the first item would be the resolution, and we, we re-typed it and filled in the blanks that you wanted there, where's Parker?
He's coming right back in.
Okay, yes, sir?
Motion to approve resolution CR two zero two one one two zero two A.
Okay, motion, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on this?
Yes. Um, for the record, how much are we paying lifeguards?
It's in there.
Two fifty.
I'm saying it for the camera so everybody can hear, and how much are we paying volunteer firemen per call?
Five dollars.
Okay. Do the math on it, that's twenty-five, twenty-five calls to make up that for lifeguard, and I'm not trying to discount lifeguards, I'm sure we're all lifeguards or something at some point in time. But these are guys that go out and volunteer, volunteer, they don't get paid anything as is, I mean, they get paid something, but it ain't, it ain't, it ain't anything. And so, I mean, what we're getting into with all this stuff is we're getting into, well, we gotta pay so-and-so, so now we have to pay so-and-so because so-and-so's getting it, and then it's just this whole back and forth of, well, we gotta pay everybody now because it ain't fair to somebody because we ain't paying nobody. And everybody here makes, you know, they make a lot of benefits, they, they got, um, you know, they make good pay, I'm not saying no one's essential, if you're working, period, if you're working, you're essential. There's not a non-essential person out there, in my opinion, if you're working, you're essential, if you're providing for your family, you're essential. That being said, I think we can do a lot better with this funding as far as it goes. Um, we, we have a lot of other areas, you know, again, we're getting into the picking and the choosing, we got a lot of other government entities that are out there doing things, they're not getting, um, they're not getting bonuses, we got a lot of people out there. The taxpayers are footing the bill, our great-grandkids are footing the bill for this thing, so if we're gonna do something on this, why don't we do something that's, you know, throwing it towards something that's not, not getting into this fight of, well, now we have to pay so-and-so because we're paying so-and-so, and that's all I'm saying.
Just for clarification, these are from the American Rescue Plan funds, not from.
I understand that, and that's, that's grant money, that's money that we are printing at an extraordinary rate to pay for, and it's on the debts of our great-grandkids, they're gonna be paying that debt. Um, so that way we can, um, for a problem that government created, that apparently we're just gonna pay government employees for, and we created this, so let's try to do something.
Should we give that money back to the federal government and tell them, and maybe you can tell them to quit printing money?
Maybe we can do something as, well, I'd love to tell them to quit frickin' printing money, cause my office got six percent stolen from me in the past year, as you have and everyone else is here has. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, why don't we do something more for the citizens of Carthage who aren't getting any relief, who didn't create this problem? Let's put that money towards something else, because again, it's not that I don't feel anyone deserves a bonus, it's not about that, that's, that's not my business, in my opinion. It's about, if you got a bonus out so-and-so, you're gonna have to bonus out everywhere, half is at the county level, half is the city level, cause it's, oh, well, I didn't get it, they got it, why didn't I get it? And we're not, we're not rewarding anybody for anything other than working their job during a time that government put the regulations and the, the, they created the problem.
Well, the government also put in the money, this was one of the things it's used for, is essential pay for essential workers, and I think they deserve it, that's why it's in there, that's my opinion.
I just wanna say my piece on that, um, my other piece on it would be, um, if we're gonna do this, um, and I'm not gonna vote for it, whether we do it or not, but I would, I would, I'll vote for an amendment on it that we raise that firefighter pay at least somewhat. Still not gonna vote for any of it, but if we're gonna do it, it's gonna go through without me or not, we need to do that, because that is not cool.
Well, if you were here for the meeting, that, that fee was figured out by the chief of the fire department to make it equitable and fair for all the firefighters.
I can tell you, they don't have twenty-five calls to make up for that.
They, they have a lot more than that, there's some that have two hundred.
Okay, well, I would like to, I would like to increase that if we're gonna do that. And I'll let you know, I'm not gonna vote for it either, I'll vote for the amendment to increase it, but it needs to be increased, cause this is gonna go through anyways, I'd like to get the volunteer firefighter or something else.
You'd like to increase their pay, but you're not gonna vote for it?
I'll vote for the amendment, but no, I don't, I don't wanna vote for any of this, period, I don't wanna vote for any of it. But it's gonna go through, so let's, let's increase, at least, if it's gonna go through, let's at least take care of our volunteer firefighters.
Is there any further discussion about this?
Um, well, I'm gonna make an amendment, y'all vote for it, um, I'd like to amend it to be fifteen dollars per call, per firefighter.
There's a, there's a motion to amend it, need a second on that? Okay, fails for lack of a second, uh, let's go back, any further discussion on the motion? Any motion? If not, uh, let's have a roll call vote on this resolution, please.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Babcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reese.
Okay, so it passes. Thank you, um, so we're going to do the next three items of new business, and then go back to all our previous grants and stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the next item of business, that would be, Scott, the approval to bid out this computer system, and then that might only, the only just problem with this is that until we vote to accept this money, ARP money, we can't really vote to use it, so could we vote to accept that first and then vote to use it?
What do we?
Well, the first unfinished business is first reading of the ordinance for the budget amendment. I didn't think about that, um.
Let's, um.
Wait just a minute, Scott, you see where I'm going with this?
I think, I would approve the ordinance, then I would do the resolution.
Yeah, I think we have to approve the ordinance to bring the money in first.
Motion to approve the ordinance BA two zero two one one two zero two A dash one ARP.
I'll second, and I'm not gonna read it off.
Okay, uh, and that ordinance, um, is this, this right here, and it brings ARP money into, uh, do you wanna say anything to that, Scott?
Do I answer any questions? You have it before you.
It just brings in the three hundred and six, forty-six thousand eight fifty-eight that we get, the first batch of money that we get from ARP.
Can I see that? I think I'm sorry, just can't.
It's a, and it basically, uh.
Sorry.
Applies to some of the things that, to what we just voted for, actually, for the the essential pay and then other things, so we have a motion to.
Approve it in a second.
Approve it, do we have a second on that?
We did have a second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, let's have a roll call vote on that, well, if there's no more, more discussion, let's have a roll call vote, cause this is bringing in a sum of money to our city.
Councilwoman Knappel?
Yes.
Councilman Babcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
abstaining.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reese.
Okay, so it passes, then we'll flip back over to.
Motion to approve bid out the land computer system.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that, do you need to, for Scott to clarify, I think he pretty well did it already.
He did.
Okay, there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, so we have the right to bid it out, now, the next one would be to bring the money in, Scott, do you wanna say anything to that, too?
Motion to approve budget amendment two zero two one one two zero two B dash one.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on that?
That's the, um.
That's for the local.
That's just the budget amendment to move the money for the computer.
Computer system.
To increase the budget for land network.
I think it's.
From twelve thousand five hundred to.
What time?
Twenty thousand. At cost originally ten million, ninety-six hundred computer gives back to the screen.
Rolls through ARP.
It's right here.
It rolls through the ARP?
It does not.
Does not.
This is a budget amendment.
So here, here it is, Councilman, it's this one, we're kind of out of orders, but it's an ordinance, a budget amendment ordinance.
Yeah.
So, it actually, it will have to have two readings, but this is the first reading, so, um, all in favor of, of, yes, sir?
Sorry, I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Eze, um, so this is, this is gonna come out of our general fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any?
And there is no way we could tie that to ARP at all?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all, I'm good, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of first reading of this, uh, I, please?
Aye.
All opposed, okay, so that passes on first reading. Okay. Then we go to, um, a special permit?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, could you, it's just, for the people to know what we're doing, I think, could you say what this is for, please?
It's a special permit that was submitted by John Luttwich for May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, for a number, another maneuvers.
Okay.
Like he had an Alcoa.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Now we will go back to, actually, can we just go back now to our reports? So that's what we need to do. Uh, okay, so we did the citizens' concerns, so thank you, Sam, for that, and we will.
Read your report, Mayor.
I understand, I was thanking him for his citizen support, thank you. Uh, okay, few things here that I just wanna bring us up to date on, um, the Vol State class that we had ended this session Tuesday night, but we're in, uh, we're having conversations about hopefully extending these till next year, and a lot of that's gonna depend on a survey that Vol State will be doing to see the level of interest here. It's a great opportunity for any graduate, graduates of high school, people wanting to come back to college to be able to get an associate's degree eventually, right here in Carthage. So I would encourage anyone here out there that is interested in taking these classes to please let Vol State know, cause that will show them there's enough interest in keeping these classes going next year. Uh, it's an in-class, in-house class, and you have the professor right there, so it's something we've never had here, where you actually have the people in the class and the professor. Uh, so it's, it's a great opportunity for anyone out there who might wanna take advantage of it. Um, we had another market fest in November, in November, it was great, it went over really well, we had the first, uh, pup parade dog contest, it was fantastic, we wanna thank the Morning Star Report group band for being there, they gave their time, it was great. We wanna thank Buddy Ingram and his folks for singing, uh, we wanna thank the Park and Recreations Committee, and we're gonna do another one of these in the spring. Uh, so put in your calendars, please, April, Saturday, April night, so if you know any people who want to be part of that, let us, let them know. Uh, Veterans Parade went great, we wanna thank the post commander, John Henry, American Legion Post Fifty-seven, it was a great one, great Christmas parade, we wanna thank, again, the Alliance Club here in Carthage for doing that each year for us, wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce for Santa and all the music, a great turnout for everybody. We have three major projects that are moving forward, we're excited about, you already know about this water and sewer, excuse me, the sewer line I and I study, which is, again, we're one of three cities in the whole state that have these pilot projects that we won from the, the state revolving fund loan. Uh, the flow meters have been put in place, the rain gauges have been put in place, they're starting to, to gauge all of this. Once all of this is, uh, by next spring, hopefully sometime, we'll have it all put together, this will be a template for the rest of the state that Mr. Curtis is putting together, so it's gonna be a great thing, yes, sir?
So we're gonna collect all that data by next spring, springtime's when we're expected to do that?
Spring or early summer, yeah.
I thought Mr. Jones said he was gonna report back like late February after smoke detection.
Well, yes, but there, there's a little bit more to that after that, yeah, yeah, so it'll be sometime early spring or summer.
That's good, that's finally started.
And the great thing about this is that because it's coming through a T-DAC pilot project, once we have all that plan in place, we will be at the head of the line to get the grants to help us then replace our sewer lines, which is a great thing. Um, and put us in line for some other grants that we're trying to get, maybe from the US Congress for that. Another great thing that just happened, a couple of weeks ago, we got a call from the Corps of Engineers from Nashville, we have been trying, um, they had put us on the top of the, the priority list, if you remember, the streambank erosion down by the sewer plant. And we've been waiting for a year to find out if Congress came through with that, and we got the call that they did give the money. Uh, the Corps of Engineers came with the team, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and met with, uh, Steve and the sewer plant, and are putting together a game plan for this, so basically, all of the engineering fees are gonna be covered. Corps of Engineers gonna do all of it, once it comes to, uh, contracting out the riprap, we only pay thirty-five percent of the whole construction project, and that can actually be offset with other monies. It can't be federal money, but we can offset it with other money, so maybe even some of the ARP if we want to, um, so that's, I know Steve's excited, I think all, everybody, Steve and everybody down there, because this is, um, this was the number one project in the whole Nashville district, and we won that from the US Congress, so that's really some, quite a coup for, for you guys to, to have that. And the other thing that we've been talking about is, of course, the Third Avenue erosion, um, that we're just, just kinda put together this week, this is gonna happen next week because of their scheduling. Uh, just so you know, that is going, it's a, it's a new, it's a process called soul nailing, that we've never, ever used anywhere around here, that I'm aware of, but T Dot was the one who told us about it. Uh, we got a special contract through the state that goes down to municipalities.
Is this where they drive the steel in at an angle?
Yeah.
They've used it many times in Jackson County.
Thirty degrees.
Yeah, okay, well, we're saving a hundred thousand dollars for our taxpayers on this, it's, it's that much less than what the retaining wall would have been, so, uh, that's gonna start, it's, as you said, Monday morning. We will try our best to mark everywhere around town that people need to detour, uh, but it's just something that has to be done, as you know, at the top of that is the oldest cemetery in town. We've gotta stop it before it erodes anymore down there, so Sam, we appreciate your patience with us on that, and we will make every effort to get your traffic down there the right way. If we're not doing it right, let us know, okay, we will, we'll, we'll rework it, but thank you for letting us know, no, it's very important, we appreciate that. So, um, that's all, I, as you all know, COVID set us back a whole bunch for, for a while, and I think now these projects are finally moving forward, so it's a, it's a really positive thing for our city. Um, seems like there's something I'm missing, Les, but you can talk about it in yours, okay, all right, I guess we're fine.
Both, both.
Okay, uh, so then we go to our attorney, anything we'd like to?
Well, we had a, I had a meeting the other day with, uh, Scott, Danielle, and the mayor, trying to hammer out some of these ordinances that you guys have wanted done, one that, y'all now voted on the pay to the employees or whatever, one that kinda was, I know it's near and dear to y'all's hearts, some of, maybe all of you, I'm not sure what the vote was on it, but was the retirement issue. Um, I, Scott and I had talked when we were trying to hammer it out, there are some issues that need to be ironclad in that before we just throw out an ordinance, a proposed ordinance and vote on it. Because this is something that can come up many, many times down the future with different employees and in different situations, and we need to make sure that it is, it is ironclad, because there could be a lot of legal questions asked in twenty-five years, and I understand all of us sitting here know, or you guys, all of y'all sitting here know what you want, but we need to make sure that it's put down on paper, and it's not just, you know, something thrown together. I think that's the recommendation based upon what I learned from Scott, that he's heard from other people, uh, that deal with this, and I, I think it's a great idea as well that we do. You don't want some judge someday having to decide what this ordinance means, um, we need to think of all the possibilities that could come out. One of the possibilities that, just to throw it out, that we had talked about was, what if you had an employee, and it's not necessarily up for discussion now, but this is just something that, what if you had an employee that worked here for, started at eighteen and worked here for thirty years, well, they're forty-eight when they retired? Well, do they draw retirement? Because they were not eligible to draw state retirement yet, they're not able to draw from TCRS, but does, do you guys want to pay their insurance at that point in time? Or do you want to start paying it when they're able to start drawing from TCRS? I don't know, that's some of the questions we were talking about, some of the things, and that's one of the reasons why you don't have a proposed amendment here for a first reading tonight, is because there's a lot of open-ended legal questions that need to be honed in on. Scott had also suggested that might not be a good idea, which I agree, maybe we don't need to reinvent the wheel, maybe we need to look at other municipalities that maybe have this in place, take their, that's already been approved by M-TAS, you know, it's already been looked at, it's already been voted on by them, and, you know, make it, you know, fit you guys for what you guys want, and I, I don't think that's a bad suggestion. Scott had said maybe Lafayette maybe has this, or, I don't know a hundred percent, I haven't looked at other municipalities, trying to find one, but that's one of the reasons that you don't see that here tonight. As in the special call meeting that we had here at five, I don't know any of the issue with why the workshop thing, I told you, I did receive an email. I don't know the question that was posed to get the response that we got from M-TAS, so I can't give you my opinion on that, I, you guys may want an opinion, but I, I'm not just gonna run bullheaded into the wind and give you my opinion reading somebody's response. Now, the email does state that, uh, there was some type of legislative inquiries, what she says in the first sentence of her email, and that when she said, this was back to the mayor, says, "And to best address your question about bonuses that were voted upon." I don't know what question was asked by the mayor.
Well, I was basically, how many other folks we can do and how it needs, what's the procedure for doing it?
I, I don't, I don't know.
That, that's not what this email is about.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know what it was, so, guess telling you going forward, if you guys want me to, I will call Ms. Hodge, um, and ask her what this legislative inquiry was, what it consisted of, what they asked, so this response would make some type of sense, and if there was something else asked by one of the city employees or the mayor or someone, try to get a response as to what question was posed, and then this will make sense to me, and I can say, oh, well, okay, I get what you're saying now, Ms. Hodge, and she may be confused about what, I don't know, but I think, I hope everyone would agree, it's imperative that you have to know the question and not just the answer.
I agree, and I think you should do that.
I agree, too.
So, uh, one of two things should happen, either our attorney should have access to the full conversation, not just the response, or we need to allow him to look it up so that we know, cause we're asking him, it's his opinion, and he, he can't even give it to us because he doesn't know the conversation, so one of those two things needs to happen.
Agreed, absolutely.
Let me.
I don't care which, but one of those needs to happen tonight.
My understanding, and again, I don't know what their conversation was, that she had to respond to a legislative inquiry, and in order to do this, we had to send her the audio of the meeting, which we did, uh, and in that audio, that's what she says in here, that as she was listening, she's just, I guess, saying to, because it's addressed to Will, too, here's some of my concerns, just listening to the meeting, and then at the end, her, her last one says, "Now that I've listened to the recording, I will respond to the legislative inquiry. I highly recommend that you schedule some time to talk with Will about the issues included in this email," which we have, to some extent.
Our motion that we have, uh, um, we'll, uh, talk to Ms. Hodge about it, is Alicia, right? That's who we've been talking to?
Yes, yeah.
Second.
Okay, I think it's fine, just, just do it.
I guess we're up for discussion now, I'll tell you just my two cents, so y'all can vote on it, I'll get ahold of her, I don't, I, I, I haven't spoken to Alicia probably in a month, so I, other than what's on that piece of paper, I know nothing about this situation, and my opinion, I gave you in the special call meeting about not having a workshop or whatever, is based upon that email, so whether we could've had a workshop, whether we couldn't have a workshop, I don't, I, I don't know, it could be that it turns out that we shouldn't have had a workshop, and if that's her opinion, that's her opinion, but I think, I think, again, I think, and I would, and I would ask.
Would it help if you just read the email?
Well, I would, I would ask from anyone, anyone sitting here, if you want my advice, you have to, and, and you're, you're wanting to base it off something M-TAS tells you, or a citizen tells you, or someone, you have to give me the backstory, you have to give me the question, you have to, I can't, I, that'd be very derelict to me, and I don't think, I think it would be unethical of me for me just to give my opinion based upon not knowing something, and I'm not going to. So, I, I can't, and I, so anytime in the future, please give me all the information, and then I can.
Well, again, not to be redundant, but. Well, again, not to be redundant, but the only thing that's said is what she says in here and we both got a copy of it, so I don't know what else.
Well, Mayor, I, I would say.
Hand raised here.
Yes, sir.
I think, just so we're clear before we vote on that, to make sure that that happens, we not only want to know that, that question of whether or not we could or couldn't have a workshop, we also want to know, I do personally, why our state legislator is getting involved in our, our local government making a decision, I want to know that. I want to know if somebody called, if, if she's just watching our meetings, trying to figure out where to get involved. What initiated, I want to know that.
Absolutely.
And I don't care if we know that by an email, we need to talk about that too. Is, is the information that you received from that, are we going to get an email about it? Are we going to talk about it at the next meeting?
And I think we should talk about it at the next meeting.
There's incomplete information here and when there's incomplete information, that's someone trying to drive a narrative that doesn't necessarily exist. And so, it's politics, it's, go past that.
It could be.
Well, it could almost be construed as violating sunshine laws.
Oh, yeah.
If you think back.
That's what I want.
Or there may be, because the legislature appointed M-TAS, there may be something that we're not aware of where they do have.
Let's find out. Let's find out.
Find out.
I think it'd be good just to find out and dig into it.
So we are asking.
I'd be interested to know how many phone calls this legislator made on other cities in the district involving their cities. I mean, is that a normal thing they do? I wouldn't think so.
So let's, let's vote on that because I want it, we need it to be official that we're asking him to do that and we want his response.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
So just for my clarification, wh- why the state legislator is involved in the city.
Aye.
City meeting and who called.
Initiated contact and maybe contact the legislator, see if someone called that legislator.
And you want to know from Alicia what question she was posed to give this response.
Correct.
Who called?
When, where and why?
And that is the wishes of the council, it cannot be manipulated at all. We've clearly said he can do that and said.
That's it.
All right, make sure we're all clear on record here.
Let me ask you a question, just because it may be, if, if M-TAS has some sort of client privilege with legislatures, we would know that too, right?
There's no client privilege.
No, talk about a sunshine law. Yeah, no.
There's no, there's no client privilege.
The next issue today, late about, of course I had to be here at five and it takes me a minute to get here, probably at two-thirty or two-forty-five, I've received an email from the, from Jeremy Hassler with the response to the question about the tax assessor issue. Again, I'm trying to play catch up on that issue because I wasn't here the whole time. I think basically their proposal in that letter, and I will forward it to you guys tomorrow morning, you don't have to vote on it today, obviously it may not be on the agenda, you may want to put it on the agenda.
This may be, we may have to go into executive session for this, if, if, because this is a, I, I don't know.
Well, nobody's going to vote, I'm just going to tell you what the letter was and.
Did this go to the other two attorneys?
Yes, it went to everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, it went to everyone. So they want you guys to pay half of the proposal.
I think we do have to go into executive session for that.
We don't have to go, it's, it's public information.
Litigation.
No litigation right now.
Let's hear from the attorney.
They, they want you to give, they want you to pay half, half of what they have asked to pay and that's contingent upon the South, is it South, South Harp is paying last year's bill. Now, I haven't had a discussion with any of the other attorneys about the issue, I don't know anything about it. When I do, I will let you know. But obviously, if y'all want to vote on that, you need to, probably, we probably do need to go back into session or whatever, but.
And it, and it's a three-way kind of situation because it's all three cities are.
I understand, I'm just telling you what I know and being transparent.
I'd like to motion that we, at the end of this meeting, we go into executive session to vote on that. Let's go and go through everything else and we'll.
Do you want to add it to the agenda because it's.
Do we have to add it to the agenda?
Make a motion, add it to the agenda and add it and have executive session at the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else?
We need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Just, the only thing I'm thinking is Vice Mayor's not here and may have another council member that needs to leave. It's pretty important.
All right. Yeah, let's, yeah.
This added to the agenda.
Yeah, I'll rescind my motion.
You want me to put it for January's?
Yeah.
And we'll plan it to be an executive session.
Good deal.
At the beginning.
Bring me that.
The last issue, I hope it's resolved itself, it was a pretty big issue in the last couple of weeks. The attorney in town, Ms. Moore, I think there was an issue in her, her building, some water issues. I hope that that issue has been resolved, I think it has been resolved. Probably want to applaud all the city workers for doing the work that they did to help stop that situation before it escalated into something that nobody wanted. So I think, from my understanding, speaking with the city workers, it has resolved itself and hopefully that will be the end of that issue, so.
And potentially save tens of thousands of dollars.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. City Recorder, you report?
I don't have anything for her unless she has a question.
Chief, Brett, Chief, Chief Davis?
Popo, get in here.
I don't have anything to report right now, guys, unless y'all have a question, the monthly report's in there. If y'all have anything to ask, feel free.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Leslie, do you have? Anything to report?
My next.
You're next.
I have nothing. Jackie, we need to do something for Jake Carver, the covers he built down to park, walking track over the beaches.
Needs to be a plaque or something put on it.
Yeah.
He donated the wood, the man to build them and everybody, so we need to do something.
That's right. We will, we will, we will do something special, we'll probably put a plaque on those dedicated to him. But, and if you haven't seen it yet, go by there, it's a really nice shelter that he's, Jake Carver has donated for both of our benches up front in the park.
Can we go ahead and add that to the agenda for next month, to what we're talking about, to vote on it?
Can't we just go ahead and put a little, I mean, we can go ahead and take care of that.
It's not really mapped enough money to.
Yeah, we, we'll take care of that.
We want to make sure we do it right, I mean, we don't want to.
Well, he will, we'll, they, they do it right.
I wasn't saying that, I'm just saying.
I see what you're saying.
You know.
Um, yeah.
We need to add it to the agenda.
I know y'all are going to laugh at me, that's the one area, I feel like that's the mayor's.
Well, it really is, but.
Her lane, but.
I mean, I'm good with that, but I mean.
Yeah, I know that.
How about if Les and, and.
If it, if it's under two thousand dollars, we don't have to vote on it anyway.
You just want to know what it's going to say.
Well, how about if, if Les and the Public Works guys and I sit down and we'll bring it to you and you can see if that's okay.
Just email us.
Yeah, just email out what you're going to put on there and we're good. I do think that's her lane.
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll, we'll do that.
I know, y'all are never going to let me know that one down.
What, what lane?
Yeah.
Okay, Derek, what are two, anything?
I don't have anything to report, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question. What's going on with Futro Alley?
That, that's coming up?
Uh, she's got the update on that.
Okay. I figured I'd ask you, but that's okay. Thank Derek.
Okay. Steve, I'm sorry, wastewater, Rusty.
Oh, well, we.
Oh, excuse me, excuse, I'm sorry, Rusty, excuse, excuse me, Rusty. Go Rusty. All righty.
Everything's running normal, the water plant up. One, one statement I would like to make to the council though is, is Councilman Babcock asked me some questions outside before about one of our projects we're working on here, the Turkey Creek Pump Station. And I just want to make it known to any council members, if there's, if there's any projects that we're working on or we're proposing or we've been going through that y'all are not completely understanding the scope of the work or the reason it's being done, if y'all will just reach out to me, I'll make an effort to go with you to the site, we'll walk around it, I'll explain it in detail. If anybody is interested, you just reach out to me and we'll make it happen. So, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Now, thank you.
Well, we had a mechanical failure at the point out last Monday, pretty serious. We had one emergency mode called Wisconsin, had to drain a lot of the tanks, get inside the basins, do some welding, so we were basically down from Monday about noon till Wednesday evening about three-thirty, we got the plant back online before Thanksgiving. We're good with the state, we didn't violate any permit, everything's been reported. That's all I really have at wastewater plant, but I did want to bring up one thing about the Third Avenue, I don't want anybody to start about. Smith County Hardware, their, their equipment rental comes out of the back of their shop, down right in the middle of Third Avenue. And I don't want to play some way that somebody could go by and talk to them or some way we could work out where it wouldn't affect their rental part.
I think Les has talked to them.
I took care of it. You guys got it?
Yeah.
That's good because.
I had an ordinance.
That was just something that I had thought about that.
Yeah, well, that's a good point, but Les, we did bring that up and he's, he's talked to them about it.
Come here and tell us about it.
They're, they're pretty good at covering the pieces, so, yeah.
Took care of it, I took care of it, that's good.
Did you take care of it, Les?
My job. That's all I got, unless y'all got any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Chief Hyatt?
Yes, ma'am, y'all have left me to report. We did commit to buy a huge fire hydrant. Mr. Ezeal is taking care of setting deposit down, we're probably looking at at least two to three weeks delivery. And one of the reasons we, we pushed ahead with this was the old eighty-two Mack popped a leak in the radiator Sunday. So Derek and gentlemen flew down to Texas, looked into the truck and I trust their judgment. We made the decision to purchase it based on y'all's approval last meeting. Right now, we're looking at a hundred and forty-four thousand purchase price for that shield here. We're going to be under budget by some, not a tremendous amount, but some. When I tap it later, there may be a couple of other things we have to do to it. But we're crossing our fingers this will make a good piece of apparatus for us for several years.
Good.
Yes, sir.
How many trucks you got right now? That are working? Yeah.
I, I have to have that meeting in order to make our, our ISO requirements.
Okay.
Thank you, if there's any questions, y'all send me at the meeting or whatever y'all want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, CFO, Scott?
Everybody has the financial report still in your financial shape? The millions for the ARP are in the general fund and during the money market account, which is all the same as the long-term for the LGIF investment fund. And since we already know how we're going to expend it, I don't see moving it around a whole lot. If you look at page three of the financial statement, you'll notice that I've indicated how we've managed that. You'll notice the fund balance down at the bottom, restricted ARP NEU funds. And then we'll make our first distributions, which we'll send out on Thursday evening next week. We'll be making the adjustments so it's clear on every line item what's been spent. And those are, as far as the purchasing policy, I know that's on the agenda, but I'd recommend we wait to do that in January.
Okay.
That's all I have, be willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, so then we'll go into, I was hoping Mr. Lee would be here to cover some of this, but he's at another meeting, he said he would try to get over after. So we'll just go quickly through some of these things, we've already talked about the Third Avenue. Evan White, one of our engineers, will be the one person who's doing the inspection of that, so we're double covered there. The Main Street Water Line, again, Mr. Jones, I thought would be here, but he's, he's working on the plans to put that together, the engineering plans, because y'all already let him go ahead. We're probably looking at next spring before we get started on this, but he's working on the plans. Turkey Creek Pump Station, Rusty's addressed that, as we know, we're going to use some of the, hopefully ARP money to help offset some of this. Futro Alley Water Line, again, that's been bid out, they're waiting for a few more things from the state to come in and then they'll get started hopefully in January on that. That's, that's what he's telling me, but if all of these parts from the state come back in. CDBG Grant, we're still waiting on that, we got our fingers crossed that would help us get a new fire engine. Still, we'd still owe forty percent, but at least that would pay for sixty percent of it, so we've got our fingers crossed. Well, no, pretty soon about that one. The Blue Cross Healthy Places, again, they haven't heard anything yet about that. We thought they would by now, but a lot of these things are taking a while, so. Everything's moving forward slowly, as always happens with the government. Okay, then we go into unfinished business, we have.
I don't think so, I mean, he addressed it the first time and it's pretty straightforward.
Same ordinance that we passed.
Motion to approve ordinance CO-202-111-04-2.
Okay, we have a motion to approve on second reading, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Thank you, so we've got that one. And we only have, actually, oh, the purchasing policy, Scott. Okay, so we're going to table that, is that what you were going to say?
Yes, I was saying motion to table that till January.
Do we have a motion to table January second?
January second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? So that would mean we can adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Favor, please.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, everybody.